I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the right.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May seventeenth meeting, county commissioners. First up is public comment. Public comment here were online. Not seeing any. We'll go to the minutes. Did you have a chance to read the minutes?
I did. I'll make a motion to approve.
All second it. All in favor say aye. Aye. Pass this to zero, except the minutes is written. Commissioner comments.
I just want to express on behalf of the Atchison County that our thoughts and prayers go out to our county clerk as she's mourning the loss of a loved one. Also, I want to let everyone know that I'm excited to have my first meeting with the new city manager of the city of Atchison this Friday morning, Amy Finch. I'm meeting her at City Hall ten o'clock and then we're going to have a quick meeting there and then we're going to do a tour of all the county offices and introductions to all of our department heads. So looking forward to that. Um, the last thing I want to talk about is the struggle that our joint communications director is currently facing. I serve on the, as the county commissioner on the joint communications board and I believe that we need to look at a wage increase. This would be a budget amendment for this year. However, with what's going on in the world, we need to make sure that we're paying competitively for shift workers who give their all and provide this, you know, the first piece of safety for all of our emergency services in Atchison County. So I appreciate our director very much. She sometimes goes above and beyond quietly behind the scenes covering for the lack of workers and she gives a lot of from herself and from her personal life to be the leader that she is. So just want to let the public know that I fully support a wage increase for our dispatchers. Feel like it's needed. And when you have the opportunity to hire dispatchers that have the experience that you don't have to train from ground zero, I think it's very, very important. So we need to look, look at that.
I don't have anything this morning. First up is our EMS department because we have a proclamation and I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas emergency medical services is a public, vital public service and the members of emergency medical teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day and seven days a week and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or of injury and whereas emergency medical services have traditionally served as the safety net of America's healthcare system and whereas emergency medical teams consist of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and approximately two-thirds of all the emergency medical services providers are volunteers and whereas the members of the emergency medical services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills and whereas Americans benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly trained individuals and it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service provider, providers by designing Emergency Medical Services Week and inju- whereas injury prevention and the appropriate use of the EMS system will help reduce national healthcare costs. Now, therefore, we, the Board of At- of Atchison County Commissioners of Atchison County, State of Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of May fifteenth through the twenty-first of twenty twenty-two as Emergency Medical Services Week. In Atchison County, it encourages all residents to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Do I hear a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
And I will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
This.
Thank you.
Want to come up?
Yeah.
I'd like to point out that it's somewhat appropriate that all of our ambulances except for the one current is currently on hold. So they're out doing their job, doing it very well.
Well. Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we keep one and one? Thank you, sir. Very much. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
I was afraid of that.
Move over by the sign. Windows make that yours. Thank you. Also, this was the week that the commission report came in on the status of all the reports on times and everything. It looks good. So anything to add there?
No, the crews do a very good job. The reports are completely uneventful. Thanks for their hard work.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Ambulances due here June seventh.
June seventh?
Yes.
I have one quick question for you. This morning in the workshop when we were talking about the joint communication dispatchers, the sheriff was here, emergency management director, HR director. They all supported an increase of wages. I was just curious where you stand on that as the MS director.
We would support that as well. They are lifeline. Without dispatchers, our people are at a huge disadvantage. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Commission decides whatever the other emergency services support or not.
Thank you.
Good. Very much. New business, Wes. Trend Micro Renewal. Good afternoon.
Okay, so I have to present our Trend Micro Renewal, which is our antivirus and spyware solution and security solution for the county. It's both does all of our computers and our email services for the entire county. It's exceptional. Anyway, so it's a Trend Micro, worry free business renewal in the amount of five thousand seven seventy-three. Any questions?
No, and this hasn't went up. So I mean, that's one of the few things. So do I hear a motion to accept the P O and nine of five thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars?
So moved.
I will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass this to zero.
Yes.
Next.
Yep.
Then I also have an O U between Atchison County and the city of Effingham for the county IT department to maintain the city of Effingham's computers and do their offsite backup of their data that I presented to you.
And that is four fee. I mean.
Four fee.
Yes, for the public, they know.
So really quick, I would like to ask county councilor a question because in between our workshop discussion and finding a couple corrections in the memorandum of understanding, I was approached that they, someone wasn't sure why the county commission would be getting into the IT business with other entities and it seemed to be a huge liability for us as county commissioners. And so I was just wondering, based on the document, I feel like I was pretty comfortable with it, but and then also to say like this is step one of the county service that if our other cities in the county were interested, it's not just specifically for Effingham. They were just the one that approached me and you on their needs. So just to better explain that, if you would.
Yeah, well, I mean, there is a statute that authorizes and encourages municipalities to work together in a contract with one another if we can provide, if they can provide services to one another at a savings, that that's something that can be considered by the various boards. So it's definitely authorized by state statute. I think the liability questions are fairly minimal and especially under the agreement that we've put forward. But that's, you know, there's, I guess with every agreement, there's a risk and there's a reward. And so you will have to weigh those to determine whether you think are it is the better part of that discussion. I don't think it's something that's going to open the county up to millions and millions of dollars of liability. I, if there is more specific concerns, then, you know, let's talk about them.
Yeah, no, that was the only concern. And I mean, I'm comfortable. I like the fact that we're helping our cities and if we can work together and and there's a need and we can fit it and there's a, I mean, it's a win-win fee and we have the time and the staff like I just wanted to clear, clarify that because it came in between without time to discuss those. So just I'm still comfortable with where we're at.
Okay, so do I hear a motion then to go ahead with the memorandum of understanding with the city of Effingham?
So moved.
And I will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass this to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You go further, Dan. Next, Emily.
Purchase order for Berry tractor in the, for the Anderson roller repairs. It ended up being seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-three cents.
Questions?
No, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass this to zero.
He'll bring that one to you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mark Shelton, audit letter approved.
Yes, so with our audit in twenty twenty-one, there is a standard audit letter just for them letting us know that when they estimate to have the audit completed and just a normal agreement that the Atchison County will give them the documentation that they require for the audit and in turn they will do their due process and have it done in a timely manner.
Okay, do I hear a motion to allow the chairman to sign the agreement, understanding with our auditors?
So moved.
And I'll second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass this to zero.
Thank you.
County Health. I see. Christina, are you on? You're muted. Christina, you're still muted.
Thank you. Sorry, it wasn't letting me unmute. And I am just on for the budget. I think you guys are full budget for public health for fiscal year ending in June twenty twenty-one and then starting July one to where we are at now. It was printed on May sixth. And we're not asking for an increase, just the same eighty thousand. And I don't really have anything else. I just am here to answer any questions you guys might have.
Christina, could you just name the Atchison County Board members so that the public knows who serves on the health departments board, please?
Sure. So for Atchison County, we have Eric Noel and Sheila Bose. And then we have Dr. Fast.
Thank you.
So, yeah, there's nine board members. There's a commissioner from each of the three counties represented. One medical and then one at large, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, from each of the three. So it's a diverse group.
And then as far as other funding, we're looking at the documentation, but you get federal and state funding. Is that correct?
And we actually typically only get aid to local that comes down from the state for health departments. But during COVID, we did get the direct payment from for Medicaid or Medicare, I'm sorry, for our hospice. And then we got some of the spark money from the county. So if you look at our twenty twenty-one, you will see there was a lot of other receipts and that is going to be the spark and the COVID money. We don't apply for any federal grants, only state.
Okay. Do you ever apply for any local grants or opportunities or is it just state?
And we actually have applied for local grants. In Jackson County, we are able to be the outlet for United Way. So we have a small United Way grant that helps people with mental health needs prescription, dental, just other needs that are outlined in that grant. So if there's an opportunity to fulfill a need in the community, we are definitely open to applying for local grants or facilitating local grants. And right now, the only thing that we have outside of state KDHE aid to local grants and county levy funding is United Way.
Okay. And that's just in Jackson County? Are you part of Atchison's United Way?
That's just in Jackson County. So Atchison County obviously has a different person that facilitates that grant. It's usually just you know, like we've had the Jackson County United Way grant for some time, over ten years. So.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just that I was going to let you know that the Atchison Community Foundation is one you might look into also as a resource locally. I know a lot of the organizations that have came before us are, are getting in with them as well. So just as another.
Okay.
That's.
All right. I don't have any questions. That will do it. Thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
Current. A, your agency on age.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm doing good. I hope you got my request and our packet. We had some issues with our postage meter. So if you didn't get it, just let me know.
Um, real quick, before we move on to you, I just wanted to notate that the multi-county health department is mandatory that we fund it here at the county level under KSA sixty-five dash two oh one. So just to give the public a little more input on that, I'm trying to do it per organization. So, okay, sorry, not to interrupt you, but I wanted to wrap that one up. So we got the letter. That's.
Is that all you got, Michelle?
Oh, Miss Katie.
It's, yeah, but I, I knew what you were meaning. No, it's fine. Um, obviously the only thing I believe we were as well with the letter. Okay, we sent out all the letters to all the counties and we did send a packet to you as well. Our postage meters on auto update and it did not auto update. So we got a whole bunch of stuff back, but haven't got it back yet. So I will, I will hunt for that or resend it to you. So you have everything. Um, we are the area agency on aging. We were established in nineteen seventy-three, part of the federal government's program to assist older Americans stay at home or in their communities as long as possible. Part of the funding that we get is through the Older Americans Act and it requires that we get local funding. So we do ask for a small portion from each of our counties that we serve. We have seven counties and then it's calculated. It's pretty simple. It's just based on population of sixteen over individuals. So we are asking for twenty-six hundred dollars, twenty-six, thirty-seven. The thing that always interests me, you know, we work with local entities as much as possible. So we have contracts with both project concern to help with the meal program and we provided them with over ninety thousand dollars last fiscal year.
Stephanie said you were fantastic.
It takes, it kind of, the way it's set up is it, it kind of forces us to, to work with everybody else. And then Amberwell Atchison, we contract with them for home health services and we, that was fifty fifty-two, almost fifty-three thousand last year. So you know, so it is quite a return on your twenty-six hundred dollars that goes back into the community of Atchison. So that's the first thing. We try to get as much of our match as possible through in-kind or donations that according to the Older Americans Act, twenty-five percent of it has to be cash from local governing bodies. That's their preference. So.
Yeah, I very much appreciate you kind of touched on, based on all the things that I want to make sure is just it's based on the population. KSA twelve dash sixteen eighty is the statute and you're kind of like, Eric used the word like overarching or like the mother agency for project concern. Yeah. Which is, is interesting. And you get federal and state.
We have federal and state, yes.
Grant funding. So.
And any other grant we can apply for.
And although that your organization's discretionary for the minimal amount based on the population and the return you're bringing home, it's a no-brainer.
Right. I mean. And we're always looking for new opportunities. I met Amy Finch over the weekend as well and I'm excited to work with her a little bit more. So, you know, we've worked with, we've been Habitat for Humanity. We've worked with United Way as well. We get United Way money for different programs other than Older Americans Act. So, yeah, we definitely try to use it in the local communities and we, you know, contract with local providers. I mean, it just makes the most sense.
One of the interesting things here recently is we had ARPA money that we've got to do a different tranche of funding and we needed to have, find something that we need to do, direct it to. And so we had a committee that got together and we are purchasing two delivery trucks that can keep meals hot or cold and that can be utilized through, how many counties?
Seven.
Seven counties. And also I didn't realize until Karen was telling me that if there's a pandemic or if there's a flood or something there that they, they can be deployed through the emergency, was it?
Emergency management from KDOT.
Since it's KDOT approved. And so it's, it's another thing that's there that the public wouldn't really see that exists. There's another service, the potential service, God forbid we ever need it, but you know, how the.
We've been on standby once. And we were all kind of a little nervous because what do we do? But we didn't, we didn't actually get called. It was for, for Elwood, a flood in Elwood. If there's ever a natural disaster declared in one of our counties, we can provide assistance.
Deploy that, but then the, during the pandemic, the amount of meals that went from congregant meals to home-delivered meals, just, you know, I can't, I see all of the funding got shifted over into other things, you know, but to, to the logistics of it was tremendous. So I got to applaud your organization for getting all of those meals delivered.
And all of our providers down here on project concern, obviously, and it was definitely took a village because I mean, it was definitely uncharted territory and you know, the rules were very strict on who could get a home-delivered meal, but then, you know, you don't want anybody in a center. So then we're trying to figure out all the extra expenses for delivery when you're losing your volunteers and, you know, you have to buy containers and you have to have your heating and cooling devices and all that stuff. So it was, it was a challenge and, you know.
And I know Eric serves as an Atchison County resident on your board. Do you have other Atchison County board members?
Um, our other Atchison County board member is James Potts.
Okay.
And then we also have an advisory council currently from Atchison. It's Mary Perkins. We actually do have a vacancy on that advisory council. So we are currently looking for anybody. If you have any good recommendations.
Atchison County? I mean, yeah, I didn't realize it. So.
Yeah.
Might send us what criteria they need.
Okay.
And maybe we can post it or something and get some, somebody who's interested.
Yeah, I've asked Stephanie a couple of times and I've talked to, you know, at all the meetings I go to, I try to recruit that we haven't had much luck. So we definitely could use another one on the advisory council.
We've had pretty good luck when we put the word out there that we've had people send letters of interest.
Which is great. Yeah.
Okay. I don't have anything for that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Atchison County Conservation District.
Did you guys have a copy of the packet?
Yep.
I don't have the paper property. Thank you.
I always forget to leave it. So I'm just leaving it now.
I'll make sure she gets it.
Okay, thank you. Um, the biggest thing that I think that I just wanted to, we have a new SDC at the NRCS level, the Natural Resource Conservation District. Um, our SDC is Jeff Wagner. He's your supervisor district conservationist. He's new. He replaced Alan Larson. Um, he's been there. He was interim and then we did, or the, the, they did go ahead and fully hire him for the Effingham position. He came from Oskaloosa. So he's been with Natural Resource Conservation for twenty-plus years. So he just came over from the Oskaloosa office. He's been a very wonderful asset to the office. He is, you know, we're learning things that we should have been doing kind of by the government standards. So we're, it's kind of learning for all of us, but it's been a very good transition for farmers and producers that I've talked to out in the counties seem to really enjoy him, come to the office. It's one-stop shop. It used to be you come in, you sign something, you may get a call ten minutes later to come back or you may get a call in a couple of days to come back. We're trying to streamline that. So it's just come in, sign. And then there are cases that he does have to have them come back in a couple of days. It depends on this, their system or their approval to go through for another signature. But he had, I just wanted to let you know that he is new to our office, but he has been with the district for the Natural Resource Conservation Service and he's been wonderful to work with and get to, get to know. Um, so on that, on the Natural Resource Conservation Service, their equipped dollars, which is a cost share program that we provide. I just wanted to give you the numbers for the last year. For Atchison County, we have seventeen active applications or I should say contracts and totaling of five hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And then we have completed seventeen at four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six. So that's how much county or money is going into the county from the last year from the federal standard standpoint. Um, our cost share money that we get from the state, our district's conservation out of Manhattan, we have water resources, which those are terraces, outlets that, that we provide funding for. There is a landowner limit of four thousand dollars, but there is a project limit of three thousand. So out of that twenty-one thousand, we were able to approve seven applications and they all did get completed where, when I say completed, either the work's been done, we're just waiting on checkout from NRCS. They will, they will and have to be paid by June fifteenth. So their estate is not encumbering any funds this year. So we have to make sure that all the work is completed, which they are. We have, we were able to work with producers. Once we heard that they weren't going to.
We have, we were able to work with producers once we heard that they weren't going to encumber and they were able to get the work done, so that's not going to be a problem. Our nine-point source, which is septic systems or sediment basins, those are the big, the top projects that we fund. And we were able to fund five with ten thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. With a total of thirty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars is what the state cost share programs brought into the county within the last year.
Do you assist people with septic system cost share?
We do.
And do you work with like any KES?
Yes, we do, we work with Martha up there, I'm trying to remember a new guy. Thank you, because I used to think it was Logan for the longest time and she just told me the other day he is no longer there. I told her, I said, oh, I'm so glad you told me that, because I've been calling the guy Logan the whole time, because I've never actually physically met him. We just work over the phone or via email, so it's, I, I wouldn't have a clue who I was talking to. But, so we do work with them, they have to, the landowners have to get a permit in order to do, get the process rolling. And then once they get a permit, they can apply through us. There is a criteria.
KES does the design.
Correct.
Correct, and then the funding.
Correct, yes. And then there is also other funding that we kind of ran into this year with someone that they have to do the work. It's not an option because they are spilling over into including, you know, the ground. So we were trying to work with them and she had also included me on, there's other like loan opportunities that are very low interest rate, if none, for, you know, individuals, because it can be very expensive, especially with the cost of everything going up. So that was good information to get with Martha and understand that part of it too, so I can assist people back to them if, because we can only give them three thousand. So, I mean, that's the max. However, we did just have a board meeting the first of May and we did increase our landowner limits. Most likely the pot of money is not going to change, but we were able at least maybe to get to where we can fund them just a little bit more, and I believe it was a twenty-five percent increase is what they decided on. So they can say, we hear you, we know that the cost of everything is going up. So we don't want to deter people from getting the work done, so we were able to kind of jump it up just a little bit. But we also want to be able to spread the money out as much as we can, so we can try to help everyone. So, yes, we do work with ADK. Yes. I gave you a copy of our budget for actuals of last year and then our estimated for twenty-two, this year twenty-two, and then a proposed for twenty-three, did you guys have any questions on that budget? Awesome, thank you so much, do you guys have any other questions for me?
Yeah, could you speak to who your board members are?
Absolutely, I have five board members, my chairman is Jeff Hale. My co-chairman is Curtis Weidemeyer. My treasurer is Jessica Stewart. And then I have two members, which is Mike Falk and Nick Lockhart. He just was elected on our board beginning of February, I think is when he ran our election.
And then, are there any programs to help with any cost share on tube replacement or hindrances to farmers to get in and out of their fields or anything conservation-wise that, I mean, we touched on like the main ones, but do you ever run into anything like that? There's one, there's a, we have an interesting situation in Atchison County where there's a culvert that's narrow and ag equipment has exceeded size. So the particular farmer that he leases his ground to cannot get in and out. For the county and all of our failed structures around the county, we cannot put that on a priority. However, he always is in the back of my mind of how can we help this gentleman if, if there's any other funds available. So I just want to throw, not that I need an answer today, but just like, it's, it's a, it's a problem for him. And his ag venture and, and business.
Are you thinking like tube, like at the entrance?
No, this is basically, well, it's basically, it used to be a county road and now it's a glorified driveway for two, what, two houses there.
Yeah, so, and I can give you.
It's not a failed structure because it's currently working, but there's a machinery that's gotten bigger and this is a narrow tube. Now a combine or twelve-world platters and things like that can't get access to the ground.
But there are certain farmers that have equipment that could access it, it's just not who he leases to. So it's one of those like, we truly want to help him.
Correct.
So if there's any other opportunities that we can find a way to help.
Email me a little bit further information on exactly what we're needing, what you would need. I will work with NRCS if there's something on their end that they can, and I will work with the DOC. There's other projects that we don't cost share on because it's not a need in our county, where we don't, but they're, they're out there. So I will do some research to see if it's something like that is out for reader, whether it's through our system or work with DOC directly. And I can definitely get you an answer for that.
Okay, awesome, yeah, I'll send you additional info.
You're gonna send her the information?
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, have a great day.
Okay, Atchison County Fair. We're just looking to get the same amount we have been getting, fifteen thousand, I believe.
Sorry, I did the same thing, I just want to wrap up Conservation District. They are discretionary whether or not we fund, may not exceed two mills per KSA two dash nineteen oh seven B and two dash one oh eight. And the fair is mandatory that we fund the association per KSA two dash one twenty-nine to pay for the premiums, paying the judges, printing and rewards. And then the fair maintenance is also a mandatory authorized. So just to let the public know this.
You want me to say the board?
Yes, please.
President is me, Joe Tolliver. Vice President's Jim Reiser, Margot Ellman's treasurer, Kristen Webb, secretary. Regular members, Jim Sheets, Jeff Martin, Sarah Kramer, Chris Isles, Julie Boyle, Janice Reese, Cole Montgomery, Brian Bodenhausen, Megan Huffman, John Atchison and Corey Neal. There's fifteen total. We've been doing painting, keeping up, trying to keep up on the painting of the roofs, because they've gotten pretty bad shape. And we just spent a little over seven thousand dollars here a couple of weeks ago on some more roof painting. Hopefully it'll get ahead of it, we won't have to keep spending so much money on that. But there's a lot of roof area out there and there's plenty of maintenance to keep up on, on the buildings. They're getting pretty old.
Do we ever get all of the alleyways concreted and?
Yes, inside, yes.
All of those are done.
In the barns itself, yeah, for the, where the cattle are now, they want to do some more work for the pigs and sheep and the goats, their pens are getting, some of them are needing a lot of maintenance done on them too, boards replaced. Latches need repaired. And we did get that water heater installed last year, I hope everybody enjoyed hot water when they washed their hands.
Is there any kind of COVID protocol this year?
We haven't really talked of any unless, you know, we get a breakout or something. But as of right now, we're running kind of like we always did, other than like I say, still no carnival, probably will. Carnival is a thing of the past, it looks like. And we're staying with the bouncy houses and we let the Lions Club run that. We've been paying for the, last year we paid thirty-five hundred dollars, I believe, and this year it's going to be like forty-five hundred dollars for the bouncy houses. They run it, they supply the man labor, they get the money off of it, last year I think they took in forty-five hundred dollars. So if they would have paid for the, you know, they made a thousand bucks, but we want to help them out, because we want them to keep doing it. And what they're using the money for stays in the county and helps out everybody.
It's attractive.
Yeah.
For other.
Yeah.
Parts of the fair.
Exactly, the little kids especially really like it. And I think we're going to try to incorporate some older, I mean, some bouncy houses that older kids, teenagers might enjoy a little more this year too. And we got some more entertainment. Well, Dylan's coming again Saturday night and then we got, Rashad wrote her name down. She was on the, well, TV shows, talent contest. So I should write her name down, sorry about that, she's going to be on Friday night. And, any other questions?
Um, no, are you guys part of the Atchison Community Foundation or have you looked into that? It's a local organization that allows people to set up where they can donate to, to your organization, so I might.
We do, send us some information if you would.
Yep.
We also, we do send out a letter and we've been getting some donations from individuals. And that's, we very much appreciate. And last year Clifford Hawk, he left us fifty thousand dollars, but we only get to use the interest, which is fine.
Yeah.
I mean, that's great. So, and that's put towards either, he, he was big in the sheep barn. He'd like, that's kind of where he wanted his money to be spent. Wants it anywhere, but preferably first there. So we'll see how much money we get off of that. We got it set up and thriving, so. That, and then we had a couple of other donations from Memorial from my cousin Jerry Tolliver. Bob Hall, yeah.
Yeah, okay, when, when is the basis of the furniture?
First, third through the, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, third through the sixth.
Thank you guys.
Otzi, your turn. The Historical Society is discretionary under KSA nineteen dash twenty-six, forty-seven and forty-eight. Yep.
You can see on the bottom of the cover letter, the names of all of our board members. We changed our bylaws this last year to increase the number on the, the potential number on the board from nine to eleven. Presently, we have ten serving. My cover letter is kind of like the brag letter, you know, the things that we did last year. It, when I look, when I look at the list, I, it's actually a longer list and what we had anticipated getting accomplished, we've been really busy. I was telling Pat that it seems like I spend more time on this than I do my vocation anymore. Then, you know, it's, it's so highway paid. And also besides, as far as the funding request, I mean, we're basically asking for the same as last year. But if there's anything that you can think of that you think might be good for the community that we should be doing, you know, please offer suggestions. We are signed up to go to the Community Foundation this year to learn more about that. I think that that's going to be increasingly important for us to be involved in that because of the prospect of probably men in charge of the railroad museum that the chamber is wanting to give to us. That, that's going to be an extremely large challenge and I'm, and I told all the stakeholders involved that don't expect us to accomplish too much, you know, in a fast period of time. Because this is a, is a project that is, would suck up money like you wouldn't believe, you know, to try to make things look better. Thought maybe I might be able to get, you know, Marlaq Construction to come over and maybe build me some new rails or something like that, you know.
Well, maybe you should try Steve Marlaq, because Marlaq Construction is not in business anymore, but Steve Marlaq.
Maybe you can email me all that contact information.
I would be, I would be glad to do that.
So, you know, as far as the funding goes, I thought, you know, maybe you could put a good word in for me.
I might now have been able to talk to you, I'll try to be that way. So your directors are your board, do you mind if I read them? Steve Kaplinger, Pat Brox, Janice Falk, Paul Dunlap, Allison Baldurama.
Yes.
Did I say that correctly? Galen Pruitt, Charles Purdue, Dia Yankee, James Cormod, Cormod and Joshua Wolf. I follow you on Facebook and I think you guys are doing great things for the community. I love the fact that you set up the computer with access for the public to be able to come and log on and search historic using the platforms of ancestry and there was another one I can't think of right now.
Newspapers dot com.
Newspapers dot com, just things like that, that I think that the public should be aware of and, and also just, it took me being in the seat and learning more about you last year to know like how small of a donation can help greatly. And I think if the public knew, knows that, like to support the history and I feel like it takes you sometimes getting older to, to really appreciate it. But like looking at what you guys do and, and just what, what's theirs.
Preserve.
Is awesome.
You know, it's, I mean, the only money that we have that we can really count on is, you know, when we plan and do our cash flow is what we get from the county. Because we never know if people are going to pay the dues. We never know if we're going to get a grant every year. I mean, if it wasn't for two or three really large supporters that we get, all we could do is basically pay the bills and, and we wouldn't have anything to do any of those extras with. And, and probably ninety-five percent plus of what we have in the museum is what's been donated to us by, you know, individuals. We don't go out and buy stuff typically to put into our collection. And, and I can't say enough about the people that we have a small cadre of volunteers that help us. And, and that long list of accomplishments that we've done this year is, it wouldn't even, it wouldn't be a, a fourth of this if it wasn't for those volunteers. We have, we have volunteers that come in twenty, forty hours a week and help us with things. And so it really is a community project and, and the, we, we don't charge. When people call us up and they call us a lot for research requests or pictures or just silly questions, you know, all that kind of stuff, we don't charge for that. If somebody calls up and say, you know, I saw my uncle's picture on Facebook, I'd sure like to have that picture. We send it to them or print off a copy for them and we don't charge anybody, you know, for that information. We figure that because we're taxpayer-supported, that it's not appropriate for us to go out. Now, we hope that they'll see the benefit of our organization and support us with dues. I mean, we only charge twenty dollars for a family for dues annually. And this year we had, we had more life members make a thousand dollar donation than any year we've ever had. And we're getting quite a group of those people and we are trying to get the newsletter out almost on time, you know, every quarter. And we really would like to probably start doing that more frequently. But it's one of those time-consuming projects that, you know, I, I quit doing my, my community project in Eppingham called The Newsleve. I quit doing that when I started working on this. All I do for The Newsleve now is just post on a Facebook page. We don't maintain a website anymore, we don't print newspapers anymore, because I just didn't have time. So we, we quit doing that in Eppingham. So now I'm doing newsletters for the, the Historical Society. But it, it's, it's a, it's a large job trying to do this right. And we need more people, we need more volunteers, you know, the site. And we need more people, we need more volunteers, you know, beside, so if, you know, if you could. Send me ten more volunteers like the ones that I've got working today in the museum. You know, it'd be worth more than the ten thousand dollars that we're asking. It's hard to find people that are that dedicated. But it really makes a big difference in what we can accomplish. We have a. Oh, a really large grant this year that. We had a fellow named Sterling Falk who was helping us last year strictly as a volunteer in the summertime. And we were able to get a grant for this large scanning project from the Kansas State Historical Society, which allowed us to start paying him in the fall. Last year and it is, I mean, you can just really see the benefits of having Sterling. Working down there and helping us. And so we were able to get a pretty large grant. At the beginning of the year. And so we've got that money in the, it's in the balances, you know, to pay his wages through the. Rest of this calendar year. And he's, you know, our inventory is what we're really focusing on. Trying to get it so that it will. We want to make our collection accessible digitally to the public. And so what we're trying to do is. We're finishing up on our. Digital collection inventory and it. It is going to be, it's it's constructed so that it'll interface with a management software and the board is already. Committed to buy this software. It's not terribly expensive. It's twelve hundred dollars, but it will allow us to. Have all this data that's on our spreadsheet now on a web-based database. So that you can sign on onto our website and you can search, keep, you know, do keyword searches and find anything that we have. Using certain names and words and things like that. And hopefully we'll have a photograph. That goes along with the information about the artifact that people can see the photograph, they can see what it's about, where it came from, how long we've had it. And that'll all be accessible to the entire internet where people can see what what it is that we have. And it'll help researchers that call us from at a distance as well as people who are locally. Trying to do family history research or find out a story about their community or whatever it. We think it's going to be a great asset once we get it up and going, but we're talking about a multi-year. Many multi-year task getting all this over. Now, our database is going to be able to be converted at a fee. And populate all those fields that's in the software. And then we'll just enhance it and add photos and and use it as our database in the future as new items come in and we add it to the database. It's, it's a really large job to try to accomplish this, but it's something that needs to be done. So that it's more institutionalized and not so dependent upon an individual knowing how to run it. And because sometimes people are not around and, you know, it needs to be perpetuated, it needs to be something that. Where, like when we had a death, we weren't completely lost. So we're going to try to solve that problem by having it so that. It's. It it's not going to be dependent upon just one person to hold it together.
Like, I can kind of see a change since you've taken over. It seemed like there's kind of a. New awareness of it and maybe it's the posting of the pictures and stuff on Facebook. I mean, it seemed like that's pretty popular. You know, it's kind of like, oh, you know, that, you know, people didn't realize a lot of this stuff existed. So, you know, it's just kind of in the background and it's kind of bringing it to the forefront. So I think you're doing a great job, everything that I've seen, so.
It's, it's a, it's a large team effort to to accomplish this.
Well, and that's one thing I took away from your list of accomplishments is just how many different organizations you're working with. Like from the Chamber to Amelia Earhart Hanger Museum, the County Fair, you're, you're receiving grants that you're writing like it's. There's so much motivation in this list of from Effi, you know, you're also doing Effingham is looking at Muskota Lancaster. You know, it's countywide. And.
We used to be pretty centered on just here.
Right. So I just, I think this is.
Well, it it's the purpose of the organization is to serve the community. It's, it's not just a a club of a few people who like to collect things. Once upon a time, it might, it kind of looked like that, but. The only purpose is is to, is to collect things, is to preserve it and preserve the stories that go with it. So what we're trying to accomplish is, yes, there's things in the cabinet and on the shelf. But we were trying to get the story to go along with it, you know, why is that in there? What's the story? Why, why was it? Yeah, why is it important? Another thing that's that we're doing is, you know, because. We have an endowment fund that thankful to many people who were forward thinking years ago. Donated large amounts of money and and we have that in an endowment fund and it's. The earnings off of it is supposed to help support the ongoing annual operation of the organization. It had dwindled a little bit through the years and we're trying to put back into it and. As a part of this inventory process that we're going through, we're finding a multitude of items that don't really, that have been collected. That don't necessarily fit the mission of the organization. And so we're trying to repatriate some of those things to other museums. So. For example, I found a large collection of antique photos from a town in Miles City, Montana. And they're great pictures, but they don't fit any mission here. Now, probably somebody used to live in Miles City, Montana. And ended up in Atchison and we ended up with a box of their stuff. You know, maybe forty years ago. So what we're doing is we're reaching out to those towns and those places and we've been sending a lot of things out. Off to better homes where they can help them. And then those things that don't fit a mission like that. We're monetizing, you know, we're going through a process of selling these items and whatever we receive. From that is going back into that endowment fund to make it bigger so that it helps future generations of. Society members to manage the organization. We, just in last year, we added over five thousand dollars to that account because of just little trinket items.
Well, any other questions?
Well, shout if something comes up. We're always glad to talk.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Steve.
See you guys later. Some issues, some Marfak works.
County Council. We have three things. There is a proposed resolution, it was chaired by Bar Council and Timor Bell, Garth Herman, excuse me. The first resolution is. Project Authorization Resolution to authorize projects to be funded through general obligation bonds. The second one is a, is a resolution that authorizes the sale of general obligation bonds to. To fund. Projects that were authorized in the first resolution. And connected with that is a. Is an agreement with a financial advisor and Stifle that we've been working with. The resolution authorizes the charity execute that agreement on the. Are questions about them?
Hey, on the first one, what would the resolution number be?
Fifteen oh one.
And this would be a resolution declaring it necessary to authorize the payment of the cost of improvements to existing or proposed. Roads in Atchison County, Kansas and providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the cost there. Your motion. I'll second that. Any other?
I just wanted to point out that the project description on this is that we will be able to utilize. We have road projects identified at a cost of one million five oh nine four sixty-two. And county culvert projects at seven hundred and thirty-one thousand one forty. So just wanted to outline that.
And with that, it's not going to cover it all, but we want to make sure that we are able to utilize the money that we bond and have. Projects sufficiently to, that we can add or subtract whichever, as they come, become available or. As the need arises, we can choose those and still have. Place for that bond to go to work. So with that, all favor say aye. Passes two to zero.
And the length of the bond that we're looking at is the seven years based on the life of the projects. We want the projects to exceed the.
Second one would be. This would be fifteen oh two. This would be a resolution offering, the offering for sale of general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-two dash A. Of Atchison County, Kansas. More information on this?
I just wanted to. Just explain our understanding of how this is going to go. Is there going to distribute it to private placement of, but a broader list. Of area banks and we're going to follow the process and guidance of. Going with the. The lowest interest rate that will be provided. That's fiscally responsible in the eyes of the taxpayers. So I know in lease purchase discussions in the past, we strive to stay local. With one of our local banks. However, with discussions and understanding this process. We are going to follow the broader list and go with with the lowest interest rate, just so everyone's aware.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor say aye. Do I need to have a separate motion for the? Okay. And that is signing a. The, what would you call that?
It's a financial advisor agreement.
While you're signing that, do you care if I sneak in another commissioner comment? I forgot, I wanted to remind the public that for District Three this Thursday. The nineteenth, May nineteenth at six o'clock at Elizabeth in downtown Atchison. It's one twenty-one North Fifth Street. I'm going to be hosting an educational session for my constituents. On just some of the topics that have been brought up when it comes to comprehensive planning and zoning being the answer. I have a lineup of guest speakers speaking on wind energy, Jessica Gigstad and Cliff Heinecker. Speaking on sanitation codes, Jeff Coder with Wheatland Contracting. And then Roger Denton, our Atchison County GIS Coordinator will be speaking on the comprehensive plan process. And then Dustin Parks, President of Kansas Association of Planning and Zoning. So any. District Three constituents that are available Thursday evening, please come. I think it'll be informative. And you'll appreciate some of the information that we learned together from these folks that are professionals. And citizens of the county, so.
Do you have anything further? For an executive session. Public comment.
So moved.
All second, all in favor say aye.